Welcome.
And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this February 19th, 2018. I now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Blanford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Whelan?
Green?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item C, we'll wait here just a second. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting February 5th, 2018?
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. I'm gonna take a little bit of an unusual step and recognize one of our Boy Scouts in attendance today. You raise your hand way high so folks can see you. We appreciate you coming as always, and I didn't see any others. I hope I'm not missing any. I asked Mr. DeBoer to ask them if it's okay to go early because we might go till the end of his bedtime tonight. Moving on to item E, Special Order of Business. E1 is a public hearing on the proposed FY19 budget for the city of Cedar Falls. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. I'll open it up to oral comments after we hear briefly from Finance and Business Operations Director Jennifer Rodenbeck, if you have a few minutes.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Tonight is the public hearing on the FY19 budget. As you and the council are aware, the budget process can kind of be a long process, and we actually started this last fall. Some of the things that kind of led up to tonight's meeting is the council did hold two goal-setting sessions in November where talked about priorities for the upcoming year, setting the parameters, financial policies for the budget. The council also held a committee meeting and a public hearing in January on the CIP, the Capital Improvements Program, which is a big part of the budget. And then two weeks ago, on February 5th, a presentation was given at the committee, the whole, just summarizing the budget, outlining the factors and assumptions that went into it. So, kind of got us up to this point tonight. And so tonight, what's for the council is a proposed budget setting the tax rate at $11.22. As we discussed at the presentation, taking that rate, coupling it with the rollback factors for each class of property, it will result in a 1.5% decrease for residential properties, a .8% increase for commercial industrial, and then a 3.7% decrease on multi-residential.
Thank you very much. Open up to anyone else in the public as it relates to this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, I declare the hearing closed. Item 2 is a resolution approving adopting the fiscal year 19 budget for the city of Cedar Falls. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks to you, Jennifer, and your staff. Great job putting those things together. Item 3 is a part, usually a part of, 3 and 4 actually, is usually a part of the resolution calendar. We thought it'd be easier in terms of potential discussion, opening it up for public to kind of list it out separately, as you can see there, so I didn't want to avoid any sort of confusion. Item 3 does read, "Resolution Approving a Highway Corridor in Green Belt Overlay Zoning District Site Plan for Construction of a Grocery Store on Lots 32 and 33, Pinnacle Prairie Business Center North." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? I will open it up to the public if anyone wants to come speak, and this is on the fairway store in Green Hill and Main Street. Anyone from the public? Yes, ma'am. You can state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Penny Pop. I'm at 4805 South Main Street, here in Cedar Falls. On this project, I'm speaking as a private citizen of Cedar Falls. As the city council considers the approval of the proposed fairway project, I would like you to listen to the following letter, sent to the Planning and Zoning Committee, and it was part of the official record. We who are residents of the South Main community of Cedar Falls has specific concerns about the impact of rezoning parcels immediately east of and adjacent to South Main Street. Our concerns are premised on four reasons. The traffic patterns on South Main Street. Two, the Main Street intersection with Green Hill Road is traffic limited by two factors. First, this intersection is signal-controlled to give priority to through-traffic on Green Hill Road. The second factor is the close proximity of Balboa access to South Main and Green Hill intersection. Three, the South Main cul-de-sac has been designed to minimize traffic count on this arterial. Four, the residents of South Main, Eldorado Heights, Wind Emir, and Wind Grace communities invested in these properties with the knowledge of existing land use. The proposed land will have a significant effect on the quality of life, especially due to increased traffic flows. Traffic concerns, Green Hill and Main. The importance of this issue cannot be understated. Neither can the date of this letter. 17 May, 1995. It could have been sent yesterday. On November 14th, 2001, the Planning and Zoning Commission again was addressed with the same traffic concerns when considering the rezoning of the corner parcels from mixed-use residential to community-commercial. At that meeting, a question and discussion period ensued regarding traffic impact analysis. Mr. Attenhoff acknowledged that a traffic analysis had not been completed. He suggested that the land use elements would be all satisfactory, and in order, the developer would then complete a traffic impact analysis and comply with any and all recommendations. There was a brief discussion on the scope of the study, on whether it should focus upon the traffic generation of the commercial development site only, or of the larger Ostra properties beyond this project area, which encompasses hundreds of acres. I found no indication on whether Ostra Properties has ever submitted a traffic impact study in the treasure trove of historical information that I have received from my neighbors. I have briefed you about the Casey's project at a prior council member, council meeting, and I won't repeat myself here. Now let's fast forward to 2017. Fairway submits a traffic impact study that is flawed. The minor streets of Balboa and Cordova are not included. The study used the identical information and counts as submitted by Quickstar. Because of the highway corridor and green belt overlay zoning district, the strict interpretation of guidelines should occur. Main Street should be classified as a collector, and the biggest obstacle is the posturing of the driveway exiting on Main Street. The proximity of any driveway with additional access to the Pinnacle Prairie development so close to Balboa and to the intersection of Green Hill and Main fails to conform the state and federal guidelines. I understand and support the importance of developing this area of Cedar Falls. Fairway could be a beneficial and important first development. This corner sets the tone for other projects. But before the city moves forward, proper and relative information must be obtained. Please request a traffic impact study that identifies the correct impacted streets from Fairway. Driveway access onto South Main will continue to pose a problem. Now what is my point in sharing all of this information? To help you see the big picture. Over the past 25 years, a strong, healthy residential neighborhood has developed around the Green Hill and Main intersection. Pinnacle Prairie has not. Many failed ideas and inappropriate projects have come to pass. The needs of this neighborhood should now take precedence over any requests and projects proposed at Pinnacle Prairie. The effects of any projects should be highly scrutinized before approval. Pinnacle Prairie needs to share in the cost of any traffic analysis done in the city. They are responsible for much of this discord. And if I were Fairway, I would demand that the landowner and developer share in the cost of a new traffic impact study for all of the blatantly omitted streets impacted by this project. And that's thinking outside the box. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And I would add the public comment as our normal five-minute, and being germane, of course. Anyone further on this project with Fairway? Hearing and seeing, sorry? I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Come on up. Your name and address, too, please.
Good evening. My name is John Dutcher. I live at 1238 Clark Drive, Cedar Falls. I'm also co-owner of Balboa Point Apartment Complex, which is directly west of the proposed fairway project. Prior to, and by the way, that's an impressive billboard at the corner of Green Hill and South Main Street, but realistically, for that to come, to take place as being an office and small-business type of situation is not realistic in today's situation. I had a chance to get out and talk to all of the residents around the area. I had a chance to talk to every one of the residents at Balboa Point. 100% of them are in favor of Fairway and Quickstar. Had a chance to talk to the people directly behind the condominium project behind there. 80% of those are in favor of it. I walked down four different evenings, talked to as many people on Balboa Avenue as I could. I found that 70% of those people were in favor of it, and, by the way, most of those people have signed the petition that, I think you people have. I'm the one that circulated the petition around, and so we have a petition with that. There were some objections. Some people wanted to keep it a green space. I asked them if they ever visited the little park around the corner down there, and they hadn't. So, you know, realistically, it doesn't need to be a green space. I have operated that particular apartment complex for the last 11 years. I drive in and out of Balboa Avenue 1, 2, 3 times a day. I've never encountered a major traffic problem or situation with that intersection. I live at 12th Street and Clark Drive. I have more of a problem with getting on the 12th Street from Clark Drive than I do from getting onto South Main Street at Balboa. So, I mean, as far as traffic, yes, there'll be a little more traffic, but I don't know that it's going to be that much more. I had a chance to get out and talk to every one of the different businesses in the Prairie Park situation, and overwhelmingly, every one of them is 100% in favor of this particular project. So, I would urge you to move forward. Let's get this thing going. It's a great asset to that part of town, and I want to see it come to be. With regard to deteriorating property values, I don't believe that either one of those will hurt my property value or any other property values on Balboa Point.
Thank you, Mr. Dutcher. Anyone further? Yes, Rosemary.
Good evening, council. Rosemary Beach, 5018 Sage Road, Cedar Falls, Iowa, Western Home Community. When they began looking at this prospect of having large businesses as the entrance way to the Western Home, I was certainly not in favor of it, as are many people not in favor of it. We are a community, and we were told, and of course, all of this is back history, that we would have small businesses there, which was changed in 2015. And I realized that there's no way to stop this, that it was going to happen. And I guess what I had just say, the code that you've written gives no leeway for just common sense of what might be good for a neighborhood. And I don't think that having a gas station, I know they call it convenience store.
Rosemary, we're on Fairway.
Oh, you're just on Fairway?
Just on Fairway.
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't hear over there, and so I didn't know, where are you going to be on gas stations?
We're going next to gas stations. We're at Fairway right now.
Okay, forget it.
You can come back.
What would you like me to do? Go back and sit down?
Yeah, yeah. Respectfully, go back to your chair. Respectfully, and we'll look for you in a few minutes. Thank you, Rosemary. Anyone further on this particular, on Fairway?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Rosemary. We need the chuckle of the evening. Kurt Olson, 3707 South Main Street. And, yeah, I have lots of concerns of what's going on within our neighborhood. Been there 20 years, and it's nice to see that we have growth in town. But one of the things that we see in politics today, and one of the words that we hear, is transparency. Another one we hear is invested. So, some of the transparency that I want to talk about tonight is about the petitions that you have received. And hopefully, you've all got a chance to look and review. And, you know, one of the petitions we got was not in favor of Fairway and/or QuickTrip. And the people that signed that petition was donated, or donated in a map by red dots, and it showed that most of those people probably lived within a half-mile, three-quarters of mile of the affected area, where we live. The streets, the population, the people, these are the people that are invested in this area. They're invested because of their housing. They're invested because this is where we live. And I know John Dutcher's giving you-
Let's keep names at a minimum, and let's affect what we're addressing here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Another petition was given on that. And as we looked, or as I looked through it, I see about a 50/50 percentage of people that may be or close to be invested. But I don't think people from Waterloo, Waverly, Shell Rock, Dyke, Allison, Tripola, Clarksville, Raymond, Chelsea, Trayer, Gilbertville, Ionia, Elton Heights, Conrad, Hudson, and some cities not even known, would be invested in our neighborhood. So, I guess transparency is the question that I'm bringing, in that the people that live there should have some of the greatest opinion of what maybe is going in the area, and not people that are not invested in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Appreciate it. Anyone further for the store Fairway? Hearing and seeing none? Any further from council? Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. DeBoer?
In some of the earlier planning and zoning meetings, there were several different requests made by different citizens, and I wondered if you could kind of go over what some of those were, and as I understand, Fairway agreed to most of those changes?
Yeah, during the site plan process, this went through Planning and Zoning Commission in December and January, and at that time, there were some ideas for the site plan. I think there was one idea to have a trail connection on the north side of the building to the trail along Green Hill Road, and that's kind of in relation to the front door of the store and the location of the bike racks. There were some comments about some landscaping around the parking lot, and then the lighting plan, and those elements have been addressed with that second meeting through Planning and Zoning Commission.
Can I ask one other question? There's been some concern regarding the traffic count between Balboa and Main. Can you tell me what you found on that? Just Balboa and Main?
There was some discussion on Balboa and Main. The study didn't specifically call it out. It would have been considered in the study, but knowing that there were considerable concerns by the neighborhood, we took it upon ourselves to go and count the intersection in the AM peak and the PM peak of, well, not of Balboa, but of Green Hill and Main. I positioned myself so I could see Balboa. It was brought to my attention that I could not, well, I could not see all the way down the street. From the vantage point that I was at, I could see probably the first two cars that were at the intersection while I was counting. Definitely could see the first car, I believe, a couple of cars. So as I counted and observed, I, if there had been a long queue on the street, I would have consistently seen a couple of cars at the stop sign, waiting to get onto Main. I did not see that. I saw pretty much free-flowing traffic, waited, did not have to wait very long to find a gap to get onto Main from Balboa. So I certainly am aware that there were concerns, but I did not see that from my observations. I guess I would also point out that there was a Casey's at one point that was proposed for this location. They proposed to put their driveway right across from Balboa. The previous city engineer made some comments on that, and that the engineering division would not approve a driveway directly across from Balboa. But I have an email here from February 24th, 2011, that states, "Engineering would support an access point on South Main Street halfway between Balboa Avenue and Blue Bell Drive." So the Fairway does have a driveway onto Main that is south of Balboa, and is in agreement with what the previous city engineer stated regarding the driveway for Casey's. So I feel it's been looked at. Balboa will always be a concern based on its proximity to Green Hill. Whether Casey's goes in, a Fairway, a Quickstar, a dentist office, no matter what goes in there, unfortunately, the way Green Hill was built, Balboa is in close proximity to that intersection. And as traffic increases, there could be some challenges at that location, but with today's traffic, it's not a concern. With the developments' traffic, I do believe it would make it more of a concern, but a Fairway and a Quickstar are not a Walmart, they're not a Target Supercenter, they're not a mall. They do add traffic, but it's not, it's not traffic to the level that I think people are believing it will be to. There will be additional traffic, but they're not, they're not tremendous traffic generators like you would see some of these other larger developments. So I think it's a workable solution.
John?
Thank you.
Anything else from council?
This is a follow-up to that. From my opinion, I have more concern about, is it Blue Bell, the one that's down?
Yes.
The next one to the east?
Is it Coneflower?
That intersects with Green Hill.
Oh, Coneflower? That intersects, yes, with Green Bell, yes.
I have more concern about the future of Coneflower than I do of Main. And you talked about the immediate development probably won't have that much impact on traffic, but will we be doing some ongoing research to see other egresses out of that development there, besides just coming out on South Main all the time? Well, as things increase, will we have an opportunity to look at that other intersection, Coneflower, and how that's going to be impacted?
As every development comes in, they're required to do a traffic impact study, so they will define the intersections that that development is required to look at. Coneflower will be one of those. Coneflower is an intersection that its proximity to Green Hill and Main, a signalized intersection, is really too close. I don't feel that that location would ever be signalized, and so basically, with an intersection like that, it becomes hard to get out of that location at AM and PM peak times, not necessarily during the rest of the day, or at night, but during those peak times, it's difficult. And people learn that. And people will learn to use the traffic signals, both at Green Hill and Main, and then at Prairie Parkway and Green Hill. So they will find those alternative routes. That's something that I don't believe these two developments will require a lot of. I do see these developments will use Green Hill and Main. And with that, you know, there is a plan for Green Hill and Main to be redesigned in 2020 and reconstructed in 2021. And with that, we plan to do a corridor study on Green Hill to look at these intersections and others along the corridor as well, to kind of get a longer-term idea of what do we want this corridor to look like? Traffic signals, roundabouts, turn lanes, no-turn lanes, three-lane section, five-lane section, all of those sorts of things. So Coneflower will be incorporated into that study as well.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
What's the current designation of South Main Street in terms of size? Is it local or arterial?
I personally would consider it a collector. I wouldn't, I would have to look at the official designation if there is one, in, say, the city ordinance with a speed limit or something to that effect, but it's not a local roadway. It's more of a collector. And I would agree with the statements made from the public that it's a collector, and internally, with the city, we've been treating it as so.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. DeBoer?
One other quick question, just to make sure I didn't miss something. In the packet, there is a petition, just on the Fairway object, there is a petition for it, but I didn't see a petition against the Fairway. One of the speakers mentioned both petitions, but just on the Fairway one, was there one for and one against? I know on the Quickstar one, we have one for and one against, but on the Fairway, I only saw the one for.
The two petitions, there was two or three petitions that were submitted early on last September was just the, just the Fair, Quickstar petition, because that started earlier in the process, and then we received additional emails and letters on both sites, and those were included in the staff report.
Right, I have those. Thank you.
Motion, a second on the table, council. This requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Moving on to item 4 is a resolution approving a highway corridor in green belt overlay zoning district site plan for construction of a convenience store, gas station, and detached car wash at Pinnacle Prairie Business Center North. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Before we ask any council update, Mr. Stern- Before we ask any council update, Mr. Sturch, could you go through the P&amp;Z meetings, I guess the background of this one as well? I should have asked a little bit of background in our process on the original one, two of the previous ones.
Yeah, we, thank you, Mayor. I put some slides together here, kind of identify the site plan here for the Quick Star site, located just east of the fairway store, near the Green Hill Main Street intersection. So this site is located on the corner of Green Hill and Coneflower. The store faces east along Coneflower. You can kind of see that Coneflower, well, it's not on the drawing, but that has a boulevard down the middle of the road. It's not going to, that's not going to change. So basically, be a ride-in, ride-out off of Coneflower and two driveways on the south side of Blue Bell. So you can see the canopy is on the east side of that gas station, and then there's a detached car wash there on the west side. So just kind of looking at some site plan elements through this site here, you got the sign up by Coneflower. There's a picnic area along the north side with some bike racks, again, the canopy in front of the building on the east side. The site will have sidewalks connected around the site into the trail along the north side there at the bike trail and Green Hill Road, and then connections on the south side. The dumpster is kind of tucked into the building there at the southeast corner of that. Then you have the car wash, which was separated on the west side. Early on, the discussion focused on, a little bit on the car wash and how that functions and circulates through the site. So the driveway, as you go into the site, you'd circle around the north side of the building, enter the car wash in the north side, go through the car wash and exit south right onto Blue Bell. So that was kind of a change on that. And then it does show some landscape around the site, well-distributed trees, conifers, shrubs around the site. The north side is heavily guarded with some conifers, pine trees and arborvitae, and those will be planted, installed at eight-foot high for some additional growth room there on that side. And then just beyond that is the detention basin for this site. So all the runoff will kind of get into the ground, go through a water quality, water filter unit, and then release in the detention basin, and that will go into the area-wide basin there on just the east of the site. This is a drawing of the front of the building. The design basically wraps around the building, similar to on all sides. You've got the front door there with the entryway, and then the canopy is kind of mimics the building there with a slope roof, hip-style roof, and then each column is wrapped in brick columns to give a little more appeal to that. And then the car wash there does look similar to the main store there. So with this, we had presentations or discussions at September and December with a recommendation of approval at the January P&amp;Z meeting, and then staff would recommend approval of the Quick Star store, subject to, they're developing their stormwater maintenance and repair agreement for that site along the north side, and then technical comments, which were in the staff report, and those were issues kind of related to existing stubs to the site. The developer and/or the contractor will go off of those and, you know, basically in accordance to CFU requirements for those utility connections. And then recommended non-lighted signage and banding on the gasoline canopy, and then, again, taller trees along the north side, and then this was submitted by Quick Star at the December meeting about limited hours of operation on the car wash from six in the morning and ten at night.
Thank you, David, appreciate that. Open up the council, discussion or questions for David or staff? Mr. Cruz, please.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I saw in the packet there reference to environmental impacts of runoff, stormwater runoff, if we have these high-volume rainstorms washing petroleum products into the detention center and then eventually going down into a residential neighborhood. I have a big problem with that. How would we?
Yeah, and that's a water quality feature that will be installed before it enters the detention, so onsite runoff and any matter from the parking lot, we filtered into that collection system and then flushed, cooled, and then released into the stormwater detention. And that's a requirement we have for all parking lots.
Rainfall capacity of that, based on the size of the lot?
It meets our stormwater on that.
John, can you?
I mean, it's fine.
It's based on impervious surfaces and how that's collected and stored in that system.
What I'm concerned with, if we have three-inch, five-inch rainstorms coming down on concrete that's got petroleum products dripping, every time you fill up a tank, you spill a little bit, it gets washed down into the retention, how much water, how much rainfall, based on inches per square feet, can this hold safely before it runs down into the residential neighborhood? That's what I'm concerned with.
It functions on that two-inch, I'm not sure, the two-inch, one-inch, ten-year event at any one time. It's based on our ordinance guidelines, and again, it collects in that system. It holds it, it collects it, it filters it, and then releases it.
Is this the same for every, any gas?
Yeah, that's, well, it's for any parking lot in town that's built. It's part of our, it meets our ordinance standards for that type of rain event and impervious areas.
Mr. DeR, you had a comment.
At the end of the last slide you had up there, you had five requests of Quick Star.
Conditions for approval.
And how responsive are they being to those requests?
Again, that, they were.
Do you anticipate them meeting?
Yes, yeah. They were basically developed by Planning, Zoning, and Quick Star, because again, with conifers, that's on the landscaping plan. The hours of operation on the car wash was presented by Quick Star, and then the signage on the canopy is part of that request or recommendation from P&amp;Z. So that was forwarded to Quick Star for their review.
Mr. DeBoer?
On that same slide, that number five, talked about limited hours on the car wash. At the P&amp;Z meetings, I think some of the residents had asked for eight to eight, but yet I see it says six to 10. What was the reason that they didn't go to the eight to eight?
Well, at that time, the car wash exited to the north, so the idea was kind of some noise impacts on the blowers. Since then, they switched it to face the south, so that noise is reduced from those nearby property owners.
Anything further from council at this point, before I open it up to public? Yes, Mr. DeR.
You'll come back to council after public?
Yes. Fine. We'll open up the folks in the public, again, five-minute limit. Rosemary, can you please be first?
Well, let's see, where did I leave off?
You need to start from scratch.
Well, to begin with, I think that having a gas station in the middle of a housing development is not a good thing to do. And if I remember correctly, a couple of weeks ago, maybe this last month, there was a gas station robbed in Cedar Falls on University, and that was one thing that concerned people out there. We are a community of gray-haired people, and we have loved our quietness and the fact that we have not had a lot of goings-on out there. One thing that I found after listening to the rest of this, when you've talked about all of the traffic this is going to generate, nobody has mentioned the city building. And the city building itself is going to have how many people in it?
It'll be different, folks, depending upon the shifts and things like that?
Well, but that is never, but when you were discussing before, you were talking about the traffic of the gas station and of the grocery store, but you also have to add in those, I thought it was like 300 people, but that sounds like a lot of people. I don't know. Anyway, but that wasn't brought into the concern. So since that I have figured out you're going to pass this one way or the other, I have a suggestion for Quick Star. That is, if I may say, the people who live out there are gray-haired people. We have arthrotty cans, arthrotty cans, you see those? We don't like to pump gas, and I know that other place, there is one other gas station in town that you can push the button, whether you, you don't have to have the handicap thing in your window, and they will put gas in your car. And that's Hy-Vee. And I'm just suggesting to be a good neighbor, maybe it could be passed along to Quick Star, that they'd have a day, that they would just say, "Welcome, gray-haired people. We love you. There are a thousand of us out there, a thousand, and you know how nice that would be to have a friend and have a thousand friends that would come to your gas station." So if we're going to have it, I'd like to suggest to them that they make it a nice community offering, and not only to just us, you can come too when you get to be that old. But in any event, I throw that in there as an afterthought and a hope that maybe it's got to work one way or the other. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Appreciate it. Mr. Wykoff?
Happy President's Day, Mayor, and everybody. Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road, the great city of Cedar Falls. I wasn't going to say anything about this, but gosh, we just installed, built Casey's up there on Green Hill Road. They just opened up a Loves out there by the Greyhound Park, and our good friends at L&amp;M Transmission are suffering daily because they can't get enough business. So I'm perplexed as to why we need another generic gas station up there on Green Hill Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? Yes, Penny.
Hello again. My name is Penny Pop. I'm at 4805 South Main Street here in Cedar Falls. This time, I'm speaking on behalf of over 130 people who have signed petitions opposing Quick Star from Eldorado Heights and South Main area. Over the past few months, this project has been discussed at planning and zoning meetings. Despite objections and concerns of hundreds of vested homeowners who have signed neighborhood petitions, this project was approved and now lies before city council. Critical unanswered questions and concerns continue. Stormwater runoff is a major concern for our area's residents. Chemicals and pollutants funnel into our Dry Run Creek watershed, and a gas station will add oppressive amounts of toxins into our watershed and into our groundwater. We should follow the lead of our state legislators in regulating and improving our water quality here in Cedar Falls. Long-term exposure to benzene levels will occur to the population within 1,000 feet of the gas station. Now, this will include the homes backing on Green Hill, as well as the Arrowhead Medical Facility, Public Safety Building, and if approved, your fairway. The population surrounding this area is made up of sensitive receptors: children, elderly, gray-haired people like me in Rosemary Beach, and medical patients. Lighting design and fixtures need to be examined further. The selection of the OSQ luminaire boasts the ability to upgrade the bulb from 250 watts to 400 watts per light. Clarification is needed on which bulb will be installed. After installation, the city must inspect to confirm lower wattage bulbs were used and will be maintained. Also, on the photometric plan, is the location of the lone camera pole. Mr. Olson, at the last committee of the whole meeting, urged new businesses to become more proactive in security and crime deterrence. The city should recommend that additional security cameras be added to the plans for the safety of the surrounding neighborhood. The noise levels provided for this project were taken from a Wisconsin location. The city needs specifics on how this information was collected to satisfy the city's noise ordinances. Code and requirements may be different in Wisconsin. The overlay did not include impacts on Arrowhead Medical Center. The city's recommendations for hours of operation should coincide with the rest of the activity in the area. Construction and other noise generators begin at seven, not six. Traffic safety and concerns, Green Hill and Main, enough said. The city's duty in the project, according to Section 29-159, Highway Corridor and Green Belt Overlay District, is to regulate the development within the Green Hill Road corridor to promote the health, the safety, and the welfare of all of its citizens of Cedar Falls. In case of conflict, the most restrictive provisions should govern. The city has a perfect opportunity to correctly plan this new expansion taking place in the southern portion of our city. Placement of our neighborhood centers will be key, but only if the businesses are not redundant. Following strict interpretation of all codes, ordinances, and guidelines will allow the city to expand without the costly mistake made in the past. Please consider taking no action tonight on Quick Star for the health, safety, and welfare of your citizens. Collaboration between all stakeholders has not been achieved. The needs and concerns of the surrounding neighborhood should be addressed, acknowledged, and acted upon, whether by the city, the landowner, the developer, new business partners, or resident neighbors. The needs of the many should outweigh the needs of the few. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. Anyone further? Yes, Mr. Dutton.
Again, one quick, again, one quick comment. John Dutton, 1238 Clark Drive. I'm responsible for the petition in favor of that. The strongest support for Quick Star came from all of the existing businesses. Matter of fact, the ambulance and fire department weren't willing to sign and put their name on a petition, but they were 100% in favor of that. Arrowhead Clinic was 100% in favor of it. In talking to the administrator and everybody else out there, they said they really want a convenience store out there. So along with the rest of the businesses, the real strength of that is from the existing businesses that were out there.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Anyone further on the Quick Star? Please.
Jerry Dixon, I live at 218 Spruce Hills Drive in Cedar Falls. I've been there for, one gentleman said he had lived in the neighborhood for 20 years. I've been there for 40 years, so I was there when Green Hill was just in the planning stages, it was cornfield back then. So to hold this thing to five minutes, a lot of these points have already been made, probably time and time again. And there was one thing that kind of keeps coming up that I just can't understand. Normally, when there's a problem, you look for the easiest way to solve the problem and keep all people concerned happy, which is, in this case, is the city of Cedar Falls has interest in attracting businesses for tax revenues. That's basically what I see as their, is their main goal. The second interest is Quick Star, who wants to build a business that makes money, like all businesses. And the third interest are the residents who this affects, and they have absolutely nothing to gain from the project but a lot to lose. And they're already located near shopping facilities at Walmart, Hy-Vee, who sell the same food products Quick Star can offer, most likely cheaper, and the availability to purchase gasoline near those two facilities, several convenience stores close by, and a recently built Casey's located only six-tenths of a mile west on Green Hill Road. In reference of that six-tenths of a mile location. Okay, going south on, or going west on Green Hill Road, there was a comment made toward one of the last planning and zoning meetings, someone asked about locating out between Menards and Walmart. And the representative from Quick Star said, "We can't do that because we're concerned of competition from the convenience store next to the A&amp;W across on 58." Well, if you go out there and drive it, it's six-tenths of a mile away, the same distance it is where they want to locate on Green Hill, between there and the Casey's. So it's no more competition or no less competition, it's the same distance. And I guess I wonder why the Planning and Zoning Committee and the City Council, which I'm kinda jumping the gun because I don't know how you feel about it yet, but I don't know why you won't entertain moving, requiring that they move the location, move it further to the south. According to the gentleman from Lockard Construction, they have 700 acres of land they can choose to build on. You can't tell me they have to build in a neighborhood that's been established since 1977. And there's also other comments made in the past that said, basically, you have to take what, you know, is thrown out there because that's a zone commercial. Well, a lot of those houses were zoned, were not zoned commercial. That area wasn't zoned commercial back in 1977. It wasn't zoned anything back then, when those houses were built. That was a cornfield owned by Merrill Oster. It was not zoned commercial. So, you know, don't make the people think that they have to buy into it because, oh, you have to expect it because it's zoned commercial. Houses were there before it was zoned. So, I would appreciate if you take that into it and put yourselves in the place of all the people that live there, and see if you would appreciate putting $300,000 in a house, planning on that to be your future, your retirement home and so forth, and then have a gas station across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Appreciate it. Anyone further before I have council speak to the matter? Hearing and seeing none, council open it up to you for any questions or comments to the previous speakers. Oh, sorry.
Ron Florrie. Live at 301 Spruce Hill Drive. Backyard is straight north across from where the proposed Quick Star is. I do enjoy using the Quick Star on Ridgeway a couple miles away, and I do that on a regular basis. But I don't appreciate the idea of a Quick Star going across the street from my place. And the reasons, many have been already stated, and those are some of the reasons. I haven't been a 40-year resident. I bought, had the place built new, and it's actually more than $350,000 home. And we moved in August of 2008. We wanted to be next to the bicycle trails, and that worked out great. We are. We thought, you know, quality of life in Cedar Falls can be good. But the Quick Star across the street does not enhance quality of life. It doesn't sound to me like it would be as good a neighbor as, say, for example, Fairway would be, if you can work out the traffic flow. So, I'm concerned as far as maintaining quality of life living in Cedar Falls. And that's the main thing. Are we going to continue valuing the people's quality of life or not? We had the house built to be able to live in for a long time. Thirty-six inch wide doors, lever handles, a no-step entry, walk-in shower, so... And it was a good thing because I had two knees totally replaced a year ago. But for quality of life, that's what I'm asking. You know, I thought Cedar Falls promoted quality of life. And that's the main thing I'm wanting to remind of. We want to maintain a good quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. Florrie. Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Barfels, 305 Spruce Hills, Mayor and Council. I have emailed you all. A lot of the same things have been brought up over and over. We are concerned of noise level. We are concerned of traffic. We are concerned of quality of life. We are also concerned that if we don't have signs implementing things in place like no parking overnight, we don't want a semi in our backyard idling all night long. And if you have a sign posted, then we have resources to call our law enforcement, and they can move them out. We don't have anything open 24/7 from Hudson and Green Hill, all the way down to going into 218 into Waterloo. And I can't see this Cedar Falls allowing a convenience store going into a prestige neighborhood. It concerns me of our crime rate when something there's all by itself all night long, and there's gonna be anybody around. The night that P&amp;Z had planned, passed this to come to you guys, the very next morning at 1:24 in Waterloo, Quick Star was robbed at gunpoint. If they had this great security camera, why isn't the person caught? Petitions have been signed by people that live there. And for people to come in and say, "Oh, we want it." I like to have a Costco, too. Do you want me to go get signatures for that, too, to put out there? I think the people that live in the neighborhood, that pay the tax dollars, have built expensive homes, have a say in this. And I'm asking you guys to please support us. We support you, and I know that businesses have a right to make a proposal to come and build in our town. But don't we have a right where we live? Also, Quick Star is going to propose to make a turn lane. We have bike trail there. Who's gonna pay for the bike trail to be moved? And if you stand on that bike trail, and that's where the turn lane's going to be, now the bike trail is going to be in the ditch, which drops off about five foot. They also asked about raising the trees, eight-foot trees. The drop-off's over five foot. I won't even be able to see them. I'll be dead before they're high enough to block the view. And for businesses around there wanting Quick Star, there's Walmart, there's Target, there's Menards, there's all those places right around, right on the road there. They don't live there. Casey's is not even open 24/7 right up the road. So, I'm asking you, why would we allow another business to come in my backyard and be open 24/7? I can go on and on. We have been here through P&amp;Z's for hours and hours. You've guys got a stack of paperwork. You've got pictures of the filthiness of a gas station. I hope you all had a chance to look at all the paperwork, all the pictures that people have sent. Some of the people wanted to come tonight. They were worried about the weather. Some of the people that have contacted me and had submitted stuff, they said, "Why bother? They're not gonna listen to us." I'm asking you to please listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barfels. Anyone further to speak on the topic? And just to be sure, my goal is to come to council. Was there someone else? Someone really needs to raise their hands higher. You've already came up, Mr... Sorry, I forgot your last name.
Dixon.
Anyone else that hasn't come up yet? Counsel, open it up to you. Comments or questions in relation to previous speakers, to staff? Mr. Burr?
Same question as I did with the Fairway. In the planning and zoning things, there were several different requests from the neighbors. Can you tell me what the Quick Star has agreed to? And do they have it in writing?
As part of those requirements or recommendations, I've sent those comments to Quick Star and had not heard anything from them. Mostly, they agree to all of them except for the lighted canopy, the signage on the canopy. And there is a representative from Quick Star who can come up and answer some questions and some of those other issues, too.
You're talking about the number three one there?
Yes, the number three. And that came from, that was a comment or recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, one of the requests, I know that some of the meetings, was the overnight parking. Was there any agreement regarding not allowing overnight parking?
That was an email that was sent early on, and I did not include that email, but it did indicate that there would be no overnight parking of semis or other vehicles at this site.
So, does that have to be attached to that other, with the list of the five requirements, to make them enforce it?
Those are signings that we can, those are signs that we can put on the site or require them to put on the site as part of this process.
Another one was the deliveries, hours of deliveries?
I would have to defer that to the rep.
We'll keep note, and appreciate the representative being here. If there's more questions, let's get them all on the table and jot them down, and we can address them one by one. Anything further, Mr. Burr?
Not yet.
Okay. Anyone else?
I had one about the bike trail. Is it going into the ditch?
No. And another item on this was in addition, or the construction of a turn lane on the south side of Green Hill Road to make that right turn into Cone Flower. That area will be graded for the turn lane and bike trail. So, the bike trail will just basically be relocated to the south of that turn lane.
And then, eight-foot trees, will they be parked in, or planted in the ditch as well?
No, that'll be on top of, right behind their parking lot or the curb on the north side of that. And then that will be a buffer between the building and the parking lot, and then you'd have the detention basin in there, between that and the bike trail, then.
Okay, thanks.
And who's paying for the cutout and bike trail?
That's an agreement later in the agenda that the city's gonna work with Green Hill Estates, which is the Oster property.
Okay, okay. Anyone further from council? Mr. Green?
I wish we had more opportunity within the council to discuss these issues. It's not really a venue where we debate or dialogue with each other. I would love to have, like, find out what information I'm missing, or what perspective could potentially help me. And it's just, we don't really do that in council. I really see this, as some of the speakers have said, as really being a quality of life issue versus tax revenue and development. And my primary concern with this is that intersection at Main and Green Hill. And for both of these projects, seeing that within that traffic study, it didn't include Cordoba and Balboa for the study side of it. And that, to me, as I was just looking through the material on my own, I was really surprised about that because South Main is the primary entry and egress, the only primary entry or only egress for the entire subdivision of El Dorado Heights, plus a significant part of Western Home Communities. So, the fact that we're gonna have that, plus the Public Safety Building, I did consider that with these votes, and what we're gonna be looking at for Green Hill Road in addition when it comes to the 58 and Viking reconstruction in the next couple of years. So, I think that we're gonna be dealing with some real problems and traffic snarls, not just for today, but in the future for these neighborhoods. And I can't say that one business deserves to be in a spot more than another. I don't think that that's an appropriate role for us to pick sort of the winners and losers, who's gonna sit on a property. But I do think that we, it's one of our primary roles with council, is to look at not just whether something's legal, but whether it's appropriate, not just for the neighborhood, but at that time. And that's where my concerns come in, is for these properties or these developments, is it appropriate to do right now? And what's the impact if we didn't approve? Would they still potentially, either these properties or these groups or similar, still use this space? So, with it being the only egress, South Main being considered a local, or it's listed right now as on the thoroughfare lists as a local route, and I know it's being used as a collector, potentially as an arterial sometime. And then with this property that we're looking at now for Quick Star, that turnout from Cone Flower, as you come out of Quick Star, you have to turn right. There's no curb cut. There's no way to get through to the left to use Cone Flower. So, I'm just concerned even about that, of traffic naturally wanting to move out of Cone Flower to the right down Blue Bell and then using South Main. So, very concerned about what that means for South Main, and then also for emergency vehicles that are gonna be coming out of the Public Safety Building in general traffic. So, just wanted to get out that it's not, as I do these votes, that it's knee-jerk, or it's really, I'm pushing through to see what these underlying issues are. And for me, the resident concerns have to be one of the primary considerations, too.
Those are good comments, Mr. Green. And to be clear, this is exactly where council is open to discuss with council or staff as far as questions. May be concerned anybody else? Mr. Wieland?
Just a brief comment. I was the third house in Heritage Road, so I know back then it was agricultural zone. So, it was zoned, but it was agriculture. And it's changed a number of times throughout the years, not on zoning, but on intent for that particular property. I'm gonna repeat something that's been said about 20 times already, so you can go to sleep if you want. But I got a memo at 115 today that listed some areas where collaboration was being sought, and I'm not totally clear on it. To Dave Sturch, the trees is a barrier. I've been to Chicago, and I've seen a million-dollar house right behind a Home Depot. And I got curious, and I went up and knocked on the door, told him I was from Cedar Falls. "Why did you build a house this big here?" He said, "Do you see it?" And I looked around. "You couldn't see the house because of the pine trees and the berm." And so, I initially looked at this. I says, "Why don't you put a berm and pine trees?" Now, has Quick Star responded in any way? I think they went from six to eight-foot-high trees, so they're attempting to collaborate there. Overnight parking, they've agreed not to do that. There's a question here on no red banner light on the north side. I don't know what that is.
That's the banding around the canopy sign.
Okay.
So, they got the sign of Quick Star and then that red banner. And that was one of the ideas, that canopy sign and banner is not lit.
Okay. And that's part of their logo, correct?
It's got me.
Part of Quick Star's logo?
Yes.
I would presume. So, restricted operating hours, 10:00 PM to closing. They haven't agreed to that?
For the store?
Yeah, it's 24 hours a day.
It's a 24-hour store.
They have the right to do that. There's no question about it. Restricting the car wash, they're opening at six, according to the recommendation. Did the neighbors want it opening later for fear of noise and disruption? Just trying to figure out if there was some compromise or not.
I can, just some brief conversation today. The six was preferred to move to seven because there's an ordinance for construction companies not beginning until after seven.
Okay. But your recommendation is six, so that's a soft one.
Yes, that can be changed.
Verbal's okay with me. Low illumination lights. And so, those are some of the areas where they were seeking collaboration. We've got a petition that has a huge number of people who've signed it. So, you've got all of these that you're trying to balance out in your decision process. And I just want to bring those items forward one more time, make sure I understood what the issues were. And so, I'll yield the floor.
Anybody else on council? Burr?
I'd like to go back to that, talking about the bike trail in the detention area. So, how much distance is there then between this moved bike trail and the detention? Is there anything in between it?
Well, from the north side of their parking lot, there's a 50-foot easement, and then there's probably another 50 feet to the bike trail. So, again, that detention will be in the ditch and on the property. So, it's gonna be moved south in order to make room for the turn lane, proposed turn lane and bike trail. So, there's quite a bit of room between that and their edge of their parking lot, so to speak.
Will this detention area be likely occupied with water quite often?
I think it's a dry basin.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a dry basin.
Thanks.
Anything further from council? I know we had the representative from Quick Star. Was there anything on council that we had that needed to be, or desired to be answered that Mr. Sturch wasn't able to answer for us?
Item number one of the five list. Can you pull that up so I can read it there?
Denny should be able to put it on there.
Sure, okay. Stormwater maintenance and repair agreement. Can you elaborate on that?
That's an agreement for their detention. So, again, it's similar to what we do with other detention basins and for new sites and projects. That's a maintenance agreement applied to Quick Star that they have to go and annually keep it clean and make sure it functions accordingly.
Okay, I'm still curious on the capacity of this retention pond and the square footage of the lot that's covered with concrete. And you have a rain event of four, five, six inches, which becomes common with global warming, whether you believe it or not. A lot of water's gonna go into that pond. And then, if we could look on page 291 of the packet, I don't know if you can pull that up. Denny can pull that one out. It shows the water coming down Green Hill and then going under or over through and ending up in the neighborhoods. And I have a big problem with that because petroleum products don't filter out of the ground. They don't decompose. ground, they don't decompose, and it could be a permanent pollution problem with a spill. So, how do we attack that situation?
I guess I can touch base on how the detention requirements are designed. So, there is a 1.25-inch rainfall event that must be contained on site, it's considered water quality, and then the detention basin itself by Quick Star, I believe it has to hold a 10-year post-development rainfall event and release it at a two-year pre-development rate. So, it has to hold water that's running off faster with more impervious area and release it at a two-year rate as if the area was still mostly pervious area, mostly field, cornfield, that sort of thing. And then the water travels into a regional detention pond, which is designed to hold water, I believe it's for 100-year event, and release at a two-year rate. I believe that's correct. So, I guess the issue that you bring up as far as pollutants, I think there, yes, if there is a gasoline spill, there's potential where it could end up in that water, but we aren't treating them any differently than we would another gas station. Now, you may have a gas station where you don't see a nearby ditch, we would require them to have a detention pond, but all of those convenience stores are draining into the storm sewer system and ending up in our waterways in one way or another. So, I can't speak in great detail about the level of pollutants that are seen in an area or development like this. But, you know, if there was something required by the DNR that the city had to meet, we would certainly have that in our ordinances. So, I'm not saying it's perfect, but we're not treating them any differently than we would any other gas station. And there may be a gas station that's farther away from a regional detention pond, but if there's a major spill, I mean, it's gonna end up in our waterways, and that's why there's a procedure set up, both on the private side and the public side, to deal with spills like that, to keep it out of the system. But, again, I will say that we, I can't speak in great detail to that, but I know that there were certain requirements by the state or federal government that we would be following those, and we would hold the developer to follow those as well.
Thank you.
Can I finish? The concern I have is, in the packet, we had pictures of other Quick Stars that were located in what I would call heavy commercial areas with other commercial development around them. Here we have a Quick Star being proposed right by R2 Construction, a residential area. And a spill is a spill, you can detain it and hold it with 100-year floods and whatnot or rainfalls, but when you got this entire area getting further developed, there's more and more concrete gonna be poured, you're gonna have more water coming down and overflow the system, and it's not gonna go into a cornfield, it's gonna go into a stream that kids play in. So, I have a big issue with that. I mean, why are we choosing to allow a gas station by residents for construction?
Anything further from council? Anything further in terms of questions being asked? I don't wanna leave out any questions with the Quick Star representative here, if there's something to be clarified in relation to that.
The banner on the canopy, if we can get clarification on that?
Was that in the list of five?
Uh-huh.
That was in the list of five, so that needs to be done before it's approved, correct?
I believe there hadn't been clarification on it yet.
Well, it's my understanding that subject two, so if folks don't do, if our applicant doesn't do any of these five, it's not a done deal. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's our recommendation that goes along with the site plan, and again, the hours of car wash, you can adjust those numbers maybe towards the code for noise, so it'd be 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Is that to ask by Mr. Miller? I don't know if we need--
I thought we were gonna hear from the rep, so I just want a clarification if it's an option, but--
Yep, yep. If you don't mind briefly, we just heard that if that doesn't happen, we don't have a development, but I'm gonna respect your time. Thanks for coming.
My name's Emily Cronbush, I work for Quick Star, Quick Trip, so any questions? I can clarify right away on the pollution. So, while the site is developed, each structure has some capacity, so if a rainfall happens like you're worried about, it's not all gonna go right into the structure before the pond. There's all some capacity in all the structures before it goes into the oil separator, and the oil separator is the last step before the pond. And in the agreement we're working with the city, we wanna work it out that whoever has water that will contribute to this pond, we wanna see their storm calculations to ensure the pond will hold for it. We don't wanna allow anyone to be able to just put anything they want into it. So, we will do annual inspections where we go out, lift the covers, clean out trash, we mow the pond, keep the pond tidy, and ensure all the pipes and structures are in working order. That helps a lot with the pollution control and whatnot.
Thank you. Anything further from council?
In relation to the question about prohibiting overnight parking, do you think that would be?
Yeah, I guess we didn't think about the signs because I know I'm already gonna have comments from our delivery guys that semis are not gonna be able to move that wall on site, so we don't see semis even pulling on there, but we will for sure add signs if you guys want right away.
Mr. Green?
If the project were approved, what would be your expected timeframe of build? Can you say that?
We are looking at starting in around mid-June, I believe it is. If it gets approved tonight, we will be sending in for a building permit in the next couple of weeks.
Anything further from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, this item is on the table, the motion and second. This requires a roll-call vote, please.
Three voting aye, four voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
This item does not pass. Since both items did not pass, that means items five, six, and seven are no longer appropriate since they were lumped together to bring everything together at once in terms of the utility easement and the procedures agreement. We'll need to bring fairway, I think, forward appropriately for those two factors later on, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item F, old business. F1 has passed ordinance 2917, amending Chapter 26 Traffic and Motor Vehicles with the Code of Ordinances relative to changing the speed limit on University Avenue from Hudson Road to the East City, limits from 45 to 35 miles per hour upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion, please? Sumoed.
Second.
Motion second, any further comment from council? Requires a roll-call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item F2 is to remove from the table the motion by Councilman Miller and seconded by Councilman Wieland to adopt a resolution approving a College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District Site Plan for Commercial and Residential Mixed-Use Development at 2119 College Street. Is there a motion to remove from the table?
Sumoed.
Has been motioned, is there a second?
Second.
Been motioned and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
How many nays? Two nays, that does carry. Moving on to item A. It reads, resolution approving a College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District Site Plan for a Commercial Residential Mixed-Use Development on College Street. We have already had a motion and second. In essence, what this is doing is removing it from the table and fast-forwarding, in essence, from the previous meeting and pinging it right back up where we left off before. What I'd like to do before that takes place with council's approval is to have, I think, staff say a couple of words just to review for folks who may not be familiar. I'll then open it up to council, as we did last time, to the public, and end with council. Yeah? Shane?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a few slides here I wanna go over real quick, just to give a brief history of this request. As Mayor mentioned, this was on council's agenda at its last meeting here. So, this is a College Hill Neighborhood District Site Plan Review at 2119 College Street. It's for a new mixed-use development, a five-story, 83-unit development in the C3 District. It's also located within the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay District, so it does require site plan review with approval by city council. So, I just wanna go over a couple of slides real quick. This slide here shows the yellow parcel is the parcel in question. The colored areas around that, that's the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay District itself, and just for representation's sake, you can see the yellow parcel is the parcel in question, and then the different zoning classifications within the overlay district. So, you can see it's a mix of residential zoning districts, and then the blue area is the C3 District, which is the high-density commercial district. Again, going over the site plan again, this is the ground floor plan for the building. It shows two retail locations here, one off of College Street, one off of 22nd Street, and then a small area for an apartment lobby, and then also an area for parking underneath the second level of the building. In total, it's about 64% of that main floor area is commercial, with the rest of it being comprised of that parking area, apartment lobby, and then there's a trash enclosure area as well. Again, determining use of the building, again, staff looked at definitions within the ordinance, principal use, accessory use, and then also looked at different sections of the zoning ordinance, looking at the College Hill Overlay District, which is Section 29160 of the zoning ordinance. Section G talks about residential uses, how they are, may be contained within principal commercial uses, and that such residential uses are considered to be accessory or secondary to the principal commercial use on the property. Again, this will have two commercial retail storefronts, which are allowed in the C3 Commercial District. Again, another section, 29160G2, goes on to talk about accessory or secondary residential uses can be established on upper floors of those principal permitted commercial uses, and that for those secondary accessory residential uses, you have to have main floor commercial, and that those are allowed then on the upper floors. Again, using that consistency with past interpretations, there's been a handful of other similar requests like this, where you have commercial on the main floor, residential uses on the upper floors, there's a couple of them on College Street, one of them recently on West 23rd Street, and then a couple downtown here, 200 West 1st Street, and then the River Place Development. So, those are all things that staff has looked at in the past in interpreting main use of the building, looking at what's the, if it's over 50% commercial on the main floor, then we look at that as the main use, commercial for the building. And again, for this building, the main level commercial use is at 64%, and that there are no residential uses on that main floor. Again, as far as parking goes, in the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay District, it does state that onsite parking is not required for secondary accessory residential uses that are located on the upper floors of those commercial uses. And then again, looking at the parking section, which is a separate section in the ordinance, 29177, goes on to talk about exempting out onsite parking as well for secondary or accessory principal permitted commercial uses in the C3 District, and it goes on to talk about as long as those units are located on second floor or higher, where the first floor is the permitted commercial use. So, there's two different sections there that kinda talk about parking requirements not being required for those upper-level residential uses. And again, for this plan itself, they are providing 65 onsite parking stalls, there's 47 stalls, which would be underground, and then the remaining stalls would be on the main level underneath part of the first floor of the building. So, again, this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission three separate occasions, November 21st, 2017, January 10th, 2018, and then January 24th, where it did receive a recommendation of approval on a five-to-four vote. And again, it's staff's recommendation to approve the site plan as presented, based on the way the staff has interpreted the ordinance in the past, and so that's staff's recommendation, and I believe Stephanie wants to talk a little bit about some of the public comments and council comments that have come in recently.
Thank you, Shane. Yep, I've heard over the past couple of weeks several questions from council members, also from the public, and so there were just a couple of areas that I wanted to address with the application and go over. One of them's related to the C3 zoning district, and a little bit of information and background about the C3 zoning district. As Shane went through on that map, the C3 zoning is a small area within the College Hill Overlay, and we also have C3 zoning in our downtown area. And the original intent of C3 was to create multi-use zoning district that was for the denser areas of town, trying to achieve both commercial and residential, and also encourage that to continue in areas that formed prior to our zoning ordinance being adopted, and we wanna see that same character and pattern of development happen in those areas. So, that's the reasoning for the C3 zoning. It also, in that zoning district, we recognize the size limitations of some of the lots, and that can be another challenge in trying to provide all of the parking, which is a requirement in other zoning districts around town. So, that's why some of the key difference in the requirements for the C3. C3 is working to encourage higher density, which does lead to walkability components, which is a part of our vision from our comprehensive plan, where it does mean that we're gonna have more people because you're encouraging more density, you are going to have more demand for services, and parking may be one of those. And that's also why then in our C3 areas, in both the downtown and College Hill, we have public parking lots to help with some of that need. I think there was a question about the frontages of the building, both on College and on West 22nd, if there would be commercial uses or retail uses, and yes, the floor plan for the first floor does show that the storefronts of both streets will have commercial uses on them. On the 22nd side, there is an entrance there with the underground parking and some parking to the rear of that lot, and then there's some common space in order to access the apartments to go up and downstairs, for example. So, that floor plan's shown there in the retail spaces or the commercial spaces that would be a part of that first floor. West 22nd sidewalk is currently 10 feet wide, we expect that to remain, and also College Street's sidewalk is about 15 feet wide, and we expect all of that to remain in place. So, that promotes what I've talked about there in terms of walkability and accessibility to the building and the commercial storefronts. Our comprehensive plan does call for mixed land uses and promoting walkable neighborhoods, so that's part of a vision that we have set forth in talking about higher-density areas, in particular in College Hill and also in the downtown. Related to parking, there's been a lot of discussion about that, and again, I think Shane went over how it is not a requirement for this proposal. There are 65 onsite spaces through a combination of underground and ground-level parking. If parking were to be applied, and if we follow some of our more recent C3 developments, we've been looking at the residential being parked, if that were to be something to apply, 136 spaces would be needed. There are 83 units being proposed with this proposal, so that means essentially 18 units would not have parking if you use the 65 spaces and apply that to, on a per-unit basis, for example. We did see a proposal last week, it was not an official proposal, it was not a formal application, so tonight what we are considering is simply what was removed from the table and what Shane went through. So, that concept is not under consideration tonight. It would need to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. We see several challenges with that in that parking is proposed on some residential lots, and so our residential zoning really limits that, whether that's a possibility or not, as well as going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an overlay review because a parking lot is considered a substantial improvement, and by the overlay ordinance would need to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission first. And then finally, I think there've been questions, again, about parking, and our budget does include, for fiscal '19, include some funding for parking study, and the council can decide how they want to apply that funding, whether that's to downtown or College Hill or a combination thereof. So, that's an option that we have available, too, in thinking ahead to parking, as well as our capital improvements plan includes several downtown parking initiatives, too, that we're looking to address. So, with that, I hope that I've answered some of the questions that have come up in the recent past here, and either myself or staff are available for any other questions.
Thank you. I think I appreciate your answers and your coming forward. It leads for open discussion now amongst council here before we go to the public. If council has any questions or comments to themselves or to staff, Mr. Miller?
Stephanie, the allotment that we've got, I believe, is 50--
Stephanie, the allotment that we've got, I believe is $50,000 for parking study? Is that adequate in your mind for a community-wide parking study?
It's probably going to be a challenge to do a community-wide parking study with that level of funding. Past examples that I know of in communities I've worked in, it's usually around $50,000 to $70,000 for a parking study. But it really depends on the scope of the study that you're looking for, and there are things that volunteer efforts can help with in augmenting that, so that we use the consultant where we need their professional needs versus spending time doing a lot of audit work or those types of things. So that's where, when the downtown group did audit work, of course, that's a couple years old, so things change, and so you always need to revisit that.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Mr. Blanford?
I know the last time this project came up, the council had a lot of statements of support, but is also very concerned about the parking issue. I know the proposal hasn't been officially submitted, but I think the developer had some compromise options that were at least presented to staff. I know some of them are a little bit challenging, but I think it's worth reviewing. I think that addresses some of the concerns that we had and still allows the project to be developed, so I would encourage us to allow that to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Blanford. Anybody else from council? Now open it up as we did last time to the public, again, five minutes, and V. Jermaine, sure, come on up, sir. Just state your name and address, if you don't mind, please.
My name is James Minkowski. My address is 1706 Cottage Lane. Dalstrom erected barriers on the proposed construction site to protect the public during demolition. Demolition is complete, but they did not remove the barriers or shovel the sidewalk for the convenience of pastors by. They need to pass in the street. This demonstrates the concern this outfit has for the citizens of Cedar Falls. Now, this outfit owns sufficient property west of the proposed construction that could be used to park to 80 cars with no place to go. Since I must provide adequate parking for people who run from me, I ask you to treat this outfit the same and avoid the College Hill parking situation from getting much worse.
Thank you, Mr. Minkowski. Anyone further?
Dan Drendel, Slingshot Architecture, Architect on the Project, address 305 East Court Avenue in Des Moines. I wanted to just get a few things in front of you, and so I brought this. And don't be concerned about how thick it is, half blank. For one, I just spelled that wrong with paper. And for two, I use books like this in our office, this size for sketchbooks, they're pretty handy. The second part of this that I'll go over just briefly, has just some recommendations about city parking strategy, planning, things, and so I'll hit those really quickly at the end, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that if you want to hang on to this book and use it for reference, or look up some of the references, please, by all means. First thing I wanted to do, and I don't know if this is really going to be helpful, I'll just, I wanted to have something to point to for you guys, because I wasn't going to be up on the screen. So maybe I'll just flash kind of what page I'm on, if that helps. So just quickly, I wanted to run through a couple of history points, so I won't be offended if all your eyes are looking down at this.
Is what you're showing us here on those?
Exactly the same. I might use them just to...
David, would you mind, so the folks in the public can also view that as well? Typically, we have a process of either being handed out or things on the screen be turned in prior, so it's purviewed to everybody in terms of the public.
Sure.
If anyone can get that. Thank you.
Really, just notes from, so I watched back the discussion, and I looked through my notes. The 124 P&amp;Z Commission meeting really had some great discussion points, and that some of the commission members were talking about that this type of project is really the direction we need to be moving as a progressive city. The great places we want to go are dense places, where that's where people want to be. I'm going to talk a little bit about what that means, and you can read through some of the other ones, like the value of having zoning like this in specific places to generate that kind of density, and trying to get more population concentrated on the hill, that that's important to the hill, that should be walkable, and this is the right thing to do here. The density is good, and it fits here. And then even the people on the commission that were concerned about it, were just concerned about the parking. After that session, then, at the end of the meeting, staff went through with the commission and got their input about where they wanted to see the zoning go, if things are going to be changed. And they talked about increasing walkability in our downtown C3 districts, vibrancy, mid-rise, five-story mixed-use development, increasing density, and adding storefronts to surrounding, or having storefronts around pedestrian-oriented blocks. So that's all really kind of what the excitement is behind doing projects like this, and we're excited to do so. I want to run through just the process that we used, next one, if you flip it over.
And just letting you know, there's, you're on two minutes, so I know you prepared long for this, but that's what we've got.
No problem.
Okay.
Yep, we didn't know we were coming today, so we hurried.
Thank you.
All right, just process. We worked first with the staff to review the zoning, determine that this was the zoning that applies, then we came to Planning and Zoning Commission. At that point, we had 33% of the quantity of bedrooms and parking spaces. We came back with a collaboration, you guys were talking about collaboration a minute ago, about hitting 51% commercial on the first floor and over 50% of the bedrooms parked. The next couple pages are just about the comprehensive plan, specifically calls for mixed use with residential up above, and if I can hit this one right here, this is what's key to the argument here. The overlay district specifically talks about this, providing for this use, and it does determine, there's no ambiguity about what primary use, what secondary use is in this overlay district. And in fact, it says if it's expressly in this section, that that should be, that that's what carries the day. Since I'm short on time, hit the bold points there, but in the secondary accessory description, residential uses on the upper floors of principal permitted commercial properties are allowed, as long as there's no residential on the first floor. And it actually goes so far as to say that Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council review relating to the establishment of these secondary accessory uses shall not be required. So the zoning, the comprehensive plan, really drove toward trying to make a project like this happen, for really the reasons that Stephanie listed about walkability and creating that. After that, I've just got some resources for you guys about how to create walkability in cities. So I'd love to talk to you guys more, but it's a short time.
Thank you.
And I do have architectural stuff, if anybody does have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone further to come and speak to this particular project? Please. Your name and address, if you don't mind.
Yishan Vajpe, 3831 Conver Lane. I want to start out by saying that there's been a lot of talk about how a secondary accessory use can be established above a primary commercial first floor, but you have to consider that residential usage above that primary commercial floor to be secondary to the building. And that's the key here. It's not secondary to the building when you stack four floors of residential on one floor of commercial. So I just want to clarify that and make sure we're all thinking on the same basis. And, you know, I'm not going to say that I'm right about everything, and so I'd love to be corrected, but another thing that I think is very unclear right now is what is going to be acted on by council? Is it this unofficial site plan that I know varies significantly from the officially offered site plan? And if it's the official site plan with four stories, as opposed to what was brought before CHP, then that needs to be very clear, and we can't let one thing influence our decision of another. So just getting into this, I speak today as an attorney, representing citizens, and as a concerned citizen myself, and I don't want to repeat everything that's been made, all the arguments that have already been made, but I want to focus on why laws and regulations exist, and why they're crucial to good governance, and the appearance and the actual governance of a city in a fair and equal way. This proposal does not adhere to the code, except by the sleight of hand stating that you can call this a secondary use based on the first floor. The first, that has no bearing in the code. It's based on a precedent, and I want to talk about that precedent, but you can't step outside of the code and give a preference to one person or another, or one development or another, because you like it or you don't. When you say you're going to step outside of the code by determining or creating this new criteria for determining the principal use of a building, you're making a subjective value judgment that isn't allowed by the law. You're saying the code doesn't matter for some project, but it does for others. You make it tougher for developers to even know what they're supposed to do. Do I look at the code, or do I think of a new creative way to shoehorn my way outside of one zoning district and into another? I want to talk about that precedent, because the only way this can work is if, and gets out of the parking requirements, is if it's shoehorned into that commercial zoning area. We're told that this isn't a new way of determining the principal use because of the precedents. Well, let's talk about those precedents, based on my understanding. Sidecar, one commercial, one residential. Dominoes, one commercial, one residential floor above it. Urban Flats, one commercial, two above it, not one plus four. Precedent is a case that is similar to another case, and that's why it informs the decision. These are not similar to what is being proposed. The only reason they're similar is because they were buildings by the same developer. River Place is cited as precedent, but that's not in the College Hill Overlay District, and that's incredibly important to this consideration. What would this lead us to? Precedent of one plus one is okay, one plus two is okay? Well, then what's next? You grant one plus four? You're going to be back here in a year, two years, saying, I got one plus four, give me one plus five, give me one plus six, give me one plus seven. And you ask yourself, what stops that from happening? Well, nothing if you rely on these methods of determining the use that aren't defined in the code. So if you want to do one plus four in the College Hill Overlay District, if you want to redefine what secondary accessory use is above a commercial floor, then change the code. This development can happen within the bounds of the code, but not within the bounds of the code as it's currently written. This development might be allowed under council discretion in another commercial district, but the College Hill Overlay District is more strict than C3, and the R4 zoning that would normally apply, it supersedes it. And it, I don't know why this keeps becoming a problem, but the College Hill Overlay zoning parking requirements is two per unit with one parking spot, two per unit with one for each additional bedroom over two, plus the additional visitors' parking, and that number is 196, it's not 130-whatever. We need to be honest, and I think the council needs to be honest with themselves in looking at this. Acting on the proposal as is, the council will be acting to approve a project that doesn't meet the code, and it doesn't matter if the staff recommends it or that P&amp;Z recommended it. If it's not, doesn't meet the code, it doesn't meet the code. In effect, by voting to approve this plan, council's granting variance, which you don't have the power to do. Stepping outside the ordinance for this project, for this developer, gives the appearance of preferential treatment and unfairness. This is all the more problematic when conflicts of interest, significant conflicts of interest, exist at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, which I outlined specifically in my letter. I don't want to rehash that in this setting, but I think, you know, approving this project as is in this manner, stepping outside the code to get this building done sends the message that if we like you in your project, the rules can be bent, and if we don't like you in your project, the rules are strictly applied, and you're treated differently. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Anyone further to speak up? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Tyber. I reside at 1709 Clay Street. Great council packet, by the way, I read it all. First way I'd like to do is just bring up one item in this resolution relating to Champaign, Illinois, a very vibrant university town, which actually has proposed eliminating all parking requirements around university areas. And they do that for a reason. It's related to highest and best use, but they've found some things already in just the last three years in which they incorporated that new standard. First of all, design has significantly improved, building quality, building valuation has significantly improved, construction costs have decreased. Most interestingly, there has been no adverse impact on automobile congestion. Okay, something to think about here. Really, what we have here, and I'm going to make three points. This is C3 zoning. It's the most flexible zoning that we have, and that's a beautiful thing, because it lets us believe in the unimaginable, the possibilities, things that we've not done before in the city of Cedar Falls. Every other zoning is very, very restrictive, but C3 is flexible. Highest and best use. I think staff made the judgment that the first floor meets the primary use definition, absolutely, it's all commercial. This is great. What you do above, and stories above, is up to the developer, and the developer has a lot of latitude there. It's not one plus one, it's not one plus two, it could be one plus eight. I've been dreaming about this kind of project for 10 years, and finally, it's happening. It could happen. You're the gateway. Number two, it solves traditional neighborhood problems that we've been working on as a council, not we anymore, but that this council's been working on for decades, for decades. It's a supply and demand solution here. We introduce more supply, we're talking about 40 units almost, the equivalent housing units, that you would potentially displace or avoid for the future. This actually prevents the continued encroachment of rentals into traditional neighborhoods. This is a good thing, this is a problem, and a solution staring us right in the eyes. And then my third point is this, capital is always going to go where capital is treated best. Okay, we've already denied one project tonight, right? Do we want to be precedent-setting? Do we want to be anti-development? This concerns me gravely. I think we want to invite big thinkers, we want to invite development, we want to be thoughtful about its impacts, both pros and cons, and not get overly concerned on potential negatives, that really, in the long run, we can't even predict the outcome of such development. So I advise all to think big, to be visionary, and to let this project happen. Believe in new urbanism, it can happen in Cedar Falls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyber. Anyone further for public comment on this item?
Dr. Sires, 1939 College Street. I'd only like to address the idea that density brings people. Waikiki is dense because it's popular. The idea that density is going to be good here is not, in my opinion, the same thing. What you've got that's dense is the university. I don't know if it's 12,000 students anymore, I guess it's dropping off a little bit, but for the most part, in my experience of 20 years with apartments, most people after they graduate from college don't actually want to live with college kids. I thought they used to, but I've had rentals on College Hill for 10 years, and other than a professor or two, we have almost exclusively students. So when you build density here, you're going to just shift students from the dorms or other places into these high-density areas. Additionally, the idea is that it's going to be walkable, and that it's going to be grand, and that people are going to want to come from far away, but the businesses that are established on the College Hill aren't high-end jewelry stores and, you know, gourmet restaurants. They're places where you get your haircut and get pizza, do your laundry, and things like that. It's all based on what the students do. To have the idea that you're going to develop parking out near the Unidome and ride a bicycle in to this area so that you can be around college students, doesn't make a lot of sense, because this is Iowa, and when it's 50 below, you don't want to ride a bike in from the Unidome. And where are you going to get your bike? I guess you can rent one or borrow one, but what are you going to do when you have your groceries, or when it's raining, or other inclement weather? So the idea that suddenly we're going to build a niche market where hikers and bikers want to go, when this really university kids, I think doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Dr. Anyone further to comment on this project? Yes, sir, please.
I'm Andy Fulman. I live at 422 North Ellen...
I live at 422 North Ellen Street. They're doing construction on my kid's school right now, and it's a giant hassle. It's my job to pick up my son every day, and all year it's been impossible to find him. I have to park in a different place, the teachers don't know where to find me. I'm standing there freezing waiting for him. But it's okay because it's better than doing nothing. And one thing we haven't talked about very much in this conversation is the cost of doing nothing. But as leaders, we all have to make sure that we remember that there's upsides and downsides to doing something, and there's upsides and downsides to doing nothing. And I guess my take here is that that, the downsides of doing nothing are high. I'm really personally aware of that because Sidecar Coffee sits in a place where they did nothing for a long time. And not only did that cost College Hill whatever people get attracted just to that particular building, but it also cost College Hill a lot of, I think, pride when people would drive and walk down that street and see that there was a big empty spot that nobody wanted anything to do with. So having our little coffee shop and yoga studio and apartments above is not just great for those of us who are there, but it's also great for the whole community. And those things don't magically happen. It's not like there was endless opportunities for people to do something, and we finally chose one. Somebody had to, one person stepped forward and did it after such a long time. So now we have another empty lot at the corner of 22nd and College, and the cost of doing nothing, I think, is too high. And I think doing something will be great. So we have, oh, and I also wanted to say about the business based on community. It's true that a lot of college kids are on the street, but I, I happen to be in a business that has been tried and not worked on College Street many, many times. There's been a lot of coffee shops that have opened and closed on College Street, so I'm very aware of how important it is for me, for our business, to attract not just the college students who walk by, and there's lots of them, but also the community members around. And it's been so amazing to see the, I mean, amazing to see the level of community support we've got from the college students, and also from the many people who live in the College Hill neighborhood in those homes, and they love living there. It's a great place to live, and they live there on purpose, and they, it's been so awesome to see them. And, and we see people from the whole town come up to the coffee shop, and I, it's always so great to see. And also, it's great to know that our little coffee shop can keep the doors open because we happen to be bringing people down who are not just from walking by, the students. So I believe that the future of College Hill does depend on it being a place for the whole community, not just a place for students. And I feel like there's a lot of possibility there. It's, it's possible that it could happen, but we have to do something. So I guess I would suggest that we trust the process, and the process so far has, the staff who we pay to find out about these things have decided that it, it fits the qualifications. And although there are many people who disagree, I would trust the professionals. It's gone through our committee meeting, and now it's your, it's up to you to choose. So I guess I would just, I would just recommend that you go ahead and vote for this project to be built. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fulman. Anyone further to discuss from the public?
Cara Bigelow Baker, 1826, Wellrun Lane, and I also work at the Razor's Edge at 2211 College Street. I don't think that much of the discussion here has been about not allowing the project to go through and to be built. I think the greatest concern with the project is that it is allowed to go through within the ordinances and the zoning codes that are in effect. The business that I work at has been on the hill for over 50 years, so it was there when there was a gaping hole right next door. And that gaping hole was not a gaping hole for 11 or 12 years, or whatever it was with the "big for sale" sign that no one wanted to purchase. We survived during that time. That gaping hole was not a detriment to the hill. I'm not saying that that was a good thing, but you can't just allow a project that doesn't fit within the law to be constructed that could be detrimental to a business that does not rely on a walkable community. The College Hill area is not a walkable or bikeable community for almost half of the year. All of our customers, most of our customers, drive cars in because they're citizens of this town, and they work somewhere else, or they live somewhere else, and so they drive to us, and they do business with other businesses on the hill. I think trying to compare us to Champaign, Illinois, which has a population of 81,000 people, when Cedar Falls' population is closer to 39,000, and their university has a population of around 48,000, and UNI has a population of around 11,000, is comparing grapes and watermelons. It is absolutely no comparison. We are not living in the shadows of Chicago. I've had a lot of time in this last week to sit and look back through old planning and zoning. I went through the planning and zoning of, I believe it was January 24th, where the discussion was continued about changing the ordinances, and the phrase that was used frequently was "Band-Aid." And so you're considering changing ordinances using terms like mixed use and how to address these things. What percentage of a ground floor needs to be commercial? What percentage of a building needs to be commercial? So you're discussing these things and planning and zoning because you admit that you don't understand how you have outlined these things for these projects in the past that are being used as a precedent, which I agree with the attorney who spoke, they should not be used as a precedent. This building is not the same as the Dominoes building. It's not the same as the Sidecar building. I also think that you need to take great stock in the letter that was written by Gary Jones, the letter that was written by Jerry Geisler, where he very intricately pointed out everything that he was made to do in the construction of his apartment buildings, and how it made continued building unaffordable in continuing to provide parking spaces for all of the tenants. The problem on College Hill for parking is not a perceived problem, it is a problem. During the last heavy snows, free of the tiers of that back parking lot were filled with cars from Urban Flats. It was very easy to tell that they had been there overnight and remained there overnight because of the snowfall, and they did not move. So before you allow a project to go forth that is going to continue to add more people requiring more places to park that is not provided for them where they live, you need to take serious consideration into where will another 100, another 50? There's not even room for another 30 cars to park there on a daily basis. And if you drive there on a Saturday morning and drive up College Hill, you will see how busy it is. If you drive there any day during the week during normal business hours, you will see for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bigelow. Anyone further to speak about the project? My goal right now is to close off the public comment and move to having council ask questions and put, and move forward accordingly. Do we have someone else?
I was going to speak, but...
Yeah, no, that's fine. We haven't gone there. Just need the, the hands up high and...
Yeah, I should have been. Appreciate it. My name's Dave Dibler. I live at 1616 Campus Street in Cedar Falls. I own a couple of properties in the 2200 block. I think this is my fourth time speaking, so I'll keep it brief, but I'm in favor of this project. I think it's valid. I'm not going to say anything that anybody else said is wrong or false. Me and the, some of the other speakers literally work, you know, six feet apart. There's a wall between us. It's a different world. I, I mean, with my clientele, I just don't see the problem with parking. Do, I'm not an idiot. I know that parking, that we need to look at parking, but I don't want to base the future of College Hill on the last 15 years. I want to, we, we, we need to be bold. We need to move forward. And I've struggled with what I'm going to say next, but I'm going to say it. One of the big issues for the opposition on this project is parking, of course, which I understand. Aesthetics, I don't get on College Hill, but I think it's landlord, competition to landlords. And I understand, I run a business, but that's not a reason to stop a project. If you have competition, if that's an issue, then we're talking money. Anybody who has substantial rental properties on College Hill should not be voting on this property, on this issue, okay? I just want to make sure that's in the public record, that it's, it's, we cannot be held back by that. All right? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Bigelow, 3909 Beaver Ridge Circle, Cedar Falls. Thanks, council and mayor and everyone else. We spent a lot of time tonight talking about parking. The issue really isn't parking at this point. The issue is the code. I said in a previous presentation, and I'll say it again, if you show an elementary student the code, they're going to say that the main use of the building, or the principal use of the building, is defined by the main use of the building, period. All the other stuff falls into place. But when you have a building that is 83% resident, residential, and 17% commercial, and you call it principal use commercial, you're violating your own code. Now, if you want to change the code, there's a procedure to change the code. But if you follow the code, the rest of it falls, comes into place. And that's, that's where it starts, and that's where it ends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bigelow.
On this edition of Panther Sports Talk, we'll check in with the winner sports teams as we get an update from head coach Ben Jacobson and recap a dominant Big 12 wrestling victory over in-state rival Iowa State. We will bring you a feature on a women's basketball player that is consistently performing for Coach Tanya Warren, look at a wrestling student athlete who expects to finish the year as an All-American, and we'll spotlight senior big man Bennett Cook. Panther Sports Talk starts right now.
Panther Sports Talk is brought to you by Pepper's Grill and Sports Pub, a proud supporter
Picture all the devices at your house that connect to the internet and all the things they do. What's wrong with this picture? Looks like your broadband service can't keep up. Now picture your family with FiberNet Broadband from Cedar Falls Utilities. CFU built fiber to your door for high-powered internet that keeps all your devices going strong. We've got the speed you need at 100, 250, or 1,000 megabits per second. Get the picture?
In Cedar Falls, see your good neighbor State Farm agent Sandy Benak for all your insurance and financial needs.
This segment of Panther Sports Talk is brought to you by Lincoln Savings Bank. At home in Iowa, at work for you.
UNI men's basketball team picks up a nice win Tuesday night at home against the Evansville Purple Aces. Not a lot of scoring offensively, but your defense really clamped down. And against the league's leading scorer, you really shut down everyone else in that win.
Yeah, and it's, it's a good thing that everyone else wasn't scoring. He was, he was tough in that first half in particular, and he made some, he made some tough shots in the second half, but I thought there was, you know, there was one three in front of our bench for sure.
And specifically for zoning. So with that in place, how would a, how would that address a prod, like this, these types of, this type of zoning? And, and would it be possible to fast-track those components in order to, to have that clarified sooner rather than later? Or would it have to be one giant block of code that would occur sometime in the future? Like, what's our timeline on that?
You want to address that or leave it to Dave?
Sure. Typically, in a zoning ordinance overhaul, in this case, we're looking at every section of our zoning ordinance. We're not looking to do small changes here and there. We're looking overall in relation to the vision from our comprehensive plan, how do we need to change our zoning ordinance? And typically, that process can take anywhere from a year and a half to two years to complete because you usually have a committee where you're thoroughly then going through the intent of different sections, drafting language, reviewing it, considering the impacts, and you're going kind of chapter by chapter, which is kind of zone by zone also. So that process can be pretty lengthy. What we've talked about with that process is to include some of the thought that we had during the rental ordinance changes of some areas of town where we want to promote more mixed use, or even look at how zoning can be an incentive tool to helping address perhaps dilapidated properties, for example, and help with redevelopment as density bonuses, for example, or those types of concepts which a lot of communities do use. And so we talked about areas around the university, maybe University Avenue around the mall, maybe even Main Street might be some key areas where we want to do a little bit of land use visioning before we get into making code changes. So certainly, we can take a look at those areas as the first part of that process. I just wanted to put out that it can be a lengthy process when you're talking about looking at your whole code, and how do sections end up working together, too? Because we have our, our zoning districts, and then we have the parking section and different sections like that of the ordinance.
Okay, so if I understand right, even though it's funded in 18, it may be like 2020 before it's completed?
It could be, yep.
Potentially, okay. Thank you.
Anything further from council? Mr. Burr?
This is a question for staff. When I read through the, the C3 zoning, again, it said that residential use is permitted but not recommended, but if allowed, it needed to follow under the R4 zoning. So I guess my question is, why is that portion of that code not being used?
I can answer that. So again, in the C3 district, it talks about principal residential use and principal commercial use. If it's deemed a principal residential use, then it has to follow the R4 standards, which inquire, include setbacks, parking, that sort of thing. Staff has deemed this to be a principal commercial use for the reasonings as stated before in the staff report and previous discussion. So therefore, it's looked at as a principal commercial building, which then the C3 district does not require setbacks, does not require parking for the residential units on the upper floors of the commercial use and, and those sort of things.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? It's been motion and second. This does require a roll call vote, please.
Motion fails, 5-2.
All right, good, thank you. Moving on to item G1, Consent Calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote and a single motion without separate discussion. As someone from the public or council requests that item be pulled separately for discussion. Is there any such request to pull items from council on the consent calendar? From the public? You have to let me know because we have folks leaving. I don't see any, I'm going to move forward with summarizing the consent calendar. Item A is receive and file the committee the whole minutes of February 5th. B is approve and adopt action taken to the committee the whole February 5th. C is receive and file the plans for the 2018 sewer rehab project. D is receive and file the bids received for the 2018 street construction project. And E is approving applications for permits and licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, please? It's a move, second. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls nay. Motion carries. Chief, can we make sure that we, just, the door can be closed or at a little bit? It's just getting kind of noisy back there, if you don't mind? Thanks. Item two is a resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion. As someone from the council or the public requests not being to be pulled separately for discussion, any such request from council? From the public? Seeing none, I will summarize the resolution calendar. A through G are personnel items. Item H is resolution declaring an official intent to issue debt for reimbursement to the city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with a specified project. Item I is approving an ent... Item I is approving and authorizing execution of amendment, assignment, and assumption of agreement between U-N-I, University Book and Supply, and the city. J is approving and adopting the recommendation of Parks and Rec Commission relative to FY19 cemetery fee schedule. K is approving and authorizing execution of a lease relative to property vacated by the 2008 flood buyout programs. L is a resolution approving the final payment relative to professional services agreement. M is a resolution approving and accepting the low bid in the amount of 4.6 million for the 2018 street construction project. N is approving and accepting a temporary easement in conjunction with the 2017 levy project. O is approving and authorizing submission of the Iowa Certified Local Government Annual Report for the Historic Preservation Commission to the State Historical Society of Iowa. P is approving a College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District Site Plan for facade improvements on West 23rd Street. And Q is approving and authorizing execution of agreement to amend restrictions in deed of dedication of Northern Cedar Falls Industrial Park. R is approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with InterCog relative to the CDBG program. S is a resolution setting March 5th as the date of public hearing on the proposed plans for the 18 sewer project. And T is setting March 5th as the date of public hearing on a proposal to undertake a public improvement project for the campus street bridge replacement university branch to Dry Run Creek Project and to authorize acquisition of private property for said project. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar?
Second.
Motion, second. Catch my breath and require a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
Motion, second. Oh, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I, are there any city council referrals this evening? Are you going to see none, any city council updates? I do believe we have an ISG student representative, Kate Olmstead, for a quick update.
Yeah, I just have a brief event to share with everyone in the community. This Thursday from 12:30 to 4:00, I believe, we'll be hosting, it's called the Growing an Imagination, a colloquium. It's a small task force at a university composed of the humanities and sciences has come together to host this event. And the whole idea surrounding it is engagement through the humanities and the sciences and arts directly into the community and this idea of what's referred to in academia called public scholarship. So it's all about community engagement through various aspects of academia. And so I'd invite anybody to come there. I know there'll be faculty, students, and community members all there and it should be really interesting.
Good, thank you, Kate. Dr. Wieland, did you have an update as well?
Mayor and city council, we did learn today that the Black Hawk County Gaming Association did approve $50,000 towards the pickleball project. So you will be seeing agreement come forward from that group in the next few weeks and then we'll start construction of that project hopefully this summer.
Very good. How much money did they raise on their own?
The proponents have raised $35,000, which was the level that we had asked them to raise. And then with the gaming grant, that's up to $85,000 and the remainder is being paid for, from the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wieland?
Public forum?
No, sir. Moving on to item K is Executive Session to Discuss Legal Matters Per Iowa Code Section 2151(c). To Discuss Strategy with Council on Matters That Are Presently in Litigation or Where Litigation Is Imminent Where Its Disclosure Would Be Likely to Prejudice or Disadvantage the Position of a Government Body in That Litigation. Is there a motion, please?
Move.
Motion, second. This does require a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item L is Public Forum. Speakers are invited to have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Anyone here from the public like to speak this evening? Waikha?
Happy President's Day, Mayor. I wish more people would have stayed around for this, but, okay. My daughter called and told me on Friday that when she rolled up to get her daughter, my granddaughter, from kindergarten school, there was a very impressive, fully outfitted police officer. She then asked what Cedar Falls is doing and the schools and the police to protect the kids and grandkids in Cedar Falls. It was mentioned that the football coach that died in Parkland, Florida, was a retired veteran and had a handgun with a conceal and carry permit but was not allowed to take it to the school. Please work with Andy Petit and our schools to turn soft target schools into hard targets to keep these insane killings from continuing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waikha. Anyone further for public comment? Mr. Wieland, yep, sorry.
Thank you. This is a public comment. I'm addressing my comments to three people who live in our communities who've had trouble with trailers. I'd like you to get out a pen and paper because I'm going to be giving you some information. Tonight, I made a proposal, or staff made a proposal, so we could put some teeth into our ordinance that would keep people from parking their trailers in front of your house. That was defeated on a vote of four to three. Because of that, I'm going to offer to you as my citizens who have not gotten any satisfaction, either from an ordinance that was well-written and answered all questions, but also from the police department because you don't like to call them. You like to call me instead. I'm going to suggest that you call my cell phone number. It's 230-7288. And I'll give that again when I get done. On that, I want you to simply say trailer. State your name and your phone number and give the address of the trailer where it's parked and the type of trailer. I will make a commitment to you to immediately contact our police department and have them go out and chalk that trailer. And this is unfortunate because it takes time. I will follow up in 48 hours to see if action has been taken or that trailer has been moved. Please, only one call per occurrence. I will take the action I said. You're the reason I'm councilperson. I want to let you know that when you call me or you make a complaint against your neighbors, nobody ever knows who that person is. Your name is not used. So I want to assure you of that. So I hope with the unfortunate circumstance that we have to go through a lengthy process in order to get these trailers eventually removed, that you'll take the action that you said you were concerned about and do call me on my cell phone. Again, the number is 230-7288. I will respond immediately by getting with the police, by taking the time to do it, and we will eventually solve the problem for you three. I think it's interesting to know that if anybody had a trailer parked in front of their house anywhere in the city, week after week, month after month, we'd have a lot of people complaining about it. But three people are just as important to me as this council chamber that was packed with issues tonight. So please, do give me a call if you're having that problem. We'll see if we can get it resolved. Thank you.
Any further public comment? We will now adjourn to Executive Session. Thank you.[1748.63]